All right, it's 6:31 in Reed Field. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Good evening and welcome to the June 5th Select Board meeting of Reed Field, Maine. We are glad that you are joining us here in person as well as on Zoom. We appreciate that. I just want to do my nightly reminder for all of the Select Board members to make sure that when you do address and speak, speak directly into the microphone. Our friends at home on Zoom will appreciate that very much. Tonight, we begin with our approval of the minutes, item 23129 from May 22nd. Are there any questions? I'd entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead, Carol.
Let me get there, sorry. So I believe there was a mention about something I said. Let me get the words. I thought we were starting with the warrant. Apologize for calling Cass's donation to the basketball and coining it Cass's Court. I intentionally am calling it Cass's Court, and that's not changing. And when it does appear somewhere, it will be called Cass's Court to honor him. My correction was apologizing for saying that his cash donation went to the basketball court. So if we can get rid of... I apologize for coining it Cass's Court. That was absolutely intentional, and I don't apologize for that.
Great. Any other questions or changes?
I didn't know the basketball court that doesn't exist had been named yet, so we'll probably hold off on naming it till we build it.
We talked about that like two years ago when he won, or maybe a year ago, whenever that was.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes with the one striking as noted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes with the one noted change. Any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Excellent, thank you very much. We now move to the warrants. We are examining and reviewing warrants 47 and 48. And for that information, we go to Catherine Woodson.
Okay, so let's see. The total amount was $81,086.15, of which $23,988.42 was payroll. $57,097.73 was for accounts payable. And anything of note? We made a payment of $2,264.60 to Casco Bay Advisors that it was work in identifying where cable ends so that we could identify the poles that are not served by Spectrum, and that is for renegotiating the franchise agreement to have cable show up at all locations in town. Cushion construction was $4,240. That was storm damage repair to various gravel roads. A fairly big bill to D.R. Designs, $3,501 was for uniforms and other equipment for the rec board. That's a pass through. And other than that, we had $1,405 in legal bills and $6,441 to Scott Horn Construction, and that was also for road repair. And we also paid the $11,000 to Stevenson Solutions for work done on the brush on the side of Church Road. So I would make a motion to approve warrants 47 and 48 in the total amount of $81,086.15.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the warrants 47 and 48 in the amount of $81,086.15. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Carol.
Sorry. There was... Maybe you said it, but I just want to see. There was a $3,501 for D.R. Design. Did you say what that was?
Yeah, I said that was for sports uniforms and so on, and that was a pass through on the rec board.
Thank you.
So I think they collect money, and then they pay for it.
Thank you.
Excellent, any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much. We now move to our Select Board communications. We have five minutes set aside for this moment for any Select Board member who would like to communicate to the public.
I guess I would like to do that.
Go ahead, Steve. Yeah.
So probably will take most of the five minutes, but I think this is important. So as a first-year Select Board member, I have definitely listened far more than I have talked in general at most meetings. I am not afraid to talk. My students will tell you that. But I felt it was important to mostly listen and do my homework to understand different people's perspectives and the ins and outs of municipal government. I've made progress on both of those fronts, but I know there's a lot more to get done. But recent events and experiences, though, have really compelled me to say a few things tonight for the record at this meeting. I agreed to run for the Select Board and take on this role because after spending almost the entirety of my adult life in Reed Field, working with the children, the families of the town, I feel incredibly invested and continue to help the town be the kind of place where I want to live and where all of my neighbors want to live. To me, that means listening to and considering the positions of some of my neighbors who see things differently than I do. And I'm fine with that because, as my children do not hesitate to tell me, I am not always right. I read a speech recently that was given by a columnist named Brett Stevens where I thought he did a really good job of summarizing my thinking about this idea. He said in that speech that "to disagree intelligently, we must first understand the views of our opponents profoundly." "That to change people's minds, we must be open to the possibility that our minds might be changed." "All of this asks us to listen charitably, argue candidly, consider deeply, examine and reexamine everything, above all, our own deeply held convictions, and to respond to ideas we reject with more and better speech, not heckling or censorship or exaggerations." I feel like that is the approach we tried to use in the Fairgrounds Working Group and one, I think, that would pay off for all of us in all of our interactions. I just think that too often of late, folks have made comments or asked questions at meetings that seem designed to make a spectacle, not to make progress. I would urge us all to consider that Mr. Stevens... What Mr. Stevens says about what I would call disagreeing productively and respectfully. I think it's important to presume positive intent, even with people you disagree with, and work hard to understand where they're coming from. That's part of what I'd like to say. But the other thing I'd like to say that I think is important to address tonight is the misinformation in recent mailings that have been sent to most town residents. Here's some of what was said in the most recent mailing. "Two women FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, officers. Were two women threatened to perform illegal acts or be fired. The position of town clerk was held sequentially by two women, Ms. Nichols and Ms. Gilman. Their employment followed one after another. After the first one mysteriously resigned, they served as the town Freedom of Information Act officers. It was their authorized duty as state officer to provide town document information requested by residents." One of these women, in tears, said that she was unable to deliver the information. She mysteriously resigned, was replaced. Were these women forced to sign non-disclosure agreements? Interference with the duties of an FOIA officer is a state crime. An NDA is a town embarrassment. Women and CEOs must be free to testify if they were forced to perform illegal acts. Were Reed Field employees forced to perform illegal acts? Now, notice, most of those things are formed in the way of questions, right? But those are questions that didn't really need to be asked in the September 19th Select Board meeting from last year, in 2022. That was addressed at a Select Board meeting. It was read into the record, the letter that all four of those women referenced in here wrote. And in that letter, all four of them said quite clearly that they were never asked to sign NDAs, and they all left on good terms for personal reasons. That was in the public record already. My concern is that I just want the folks in town to look carefully at this. I've asked that that letter, which is a public letter, they asked for it to be posted. But I think we need to post it on the school web... On the town website. So I've asked Eric to do that. I think it's the appropriate thing to do to get that out there in public. And I would hope that we can have elections and have discourse that is honest and forthright, right? I just feel like we don't gain anything by being in each other's throats, right? You can disagree with someone. You can think they're wrong, right? And still have productive dialogue with them. I'm 100% convinced of that, and I hope that we all do that same thing. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Go ahead, Carol.
I'd like to kind of dovetail off of that. I'm not a Bob fan. I'm not a cheerleader for him. I'm pro-business. After that came out, I mean, I've told him numerous times, as have many people close to Bob. Can you please stand down and stop with the angry letters? And I really led into him on that one, saying that has absolutely nothing to do with this election. That's old news. It's hearsay. It has nothing to do with anything. And please stop naming people and drawing them into your negativity that don't ask to be involved in that. There's a gentleman at the bottom of that that I know did not want to be mentioned at all. And his wife tried to stop it. He's like, "Oh, it's already gotten to print." So everybody knows where he stands. I don't think, you know, doing more of those is helping anybody. So there's that. The one thing on the Fairgrounds that I think is unfortunate is last time it was voted on... When it was voted down, is it because of the price? $700,000, whatever? $500,000, whatever it was? Both numbers are out there. The $700,000 is actually in the comprehensive plan, so that number was out there. Or do people not want the rec center at the fairgrounds? It was like, which one was it? And, you know, conversations with Hannah, it's like, I thought it was price. We don't know for sure because there were those two issues out there. Now we kind of come again. This is voted down. Is it because basketball was out? Is it because people don't want rec at the fairgrounds? We've got the same thing going on instead of the same plan going forward with no cost. We threw another angle in that's causing disfavor with some people. So I'm just saying it. The water is muddied again. Not sure, again, if it's not wanting it there or people are upset with the plan, the way that it evolved. So I'm just saying that the outcome... I've been telling people, vote for it so we can move forward. But it's... We'll see. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great. We now move on to our staff communication. This is the Town Manager Report. Eric, it's too early in the month for the financial report, so if you want to just talk to us a little bit?
The month just closed out a few days ago. So I'll just give a brief update on work on Church Road because that's the going concern now, is that we have started with the reclamation process for that particular roadway. Pike will be moving on to putting in some additional gravel where needed and doing some base paving as the next phase after that base is rolled and firmly rolled. We do have our Deputy Road Commissioner out there multiple times a day in regular communication with the project manager from Pike. I talk to him as well intermittently. But the project seems to be moving along quickly, and we're trying to minimize disruption to the town as we work on improving that very important roadway that seems to be getting more and more traffic. So once the grading and rolling are complete, again, the base asphalt will be put in in the areas where the reclamation happened. And then we'll be following through after that with a base... A finish course of a smaller diameter aggregate, which makes that nice smooth finish that everybody likes to drive on. And then we'll be moving forward with striping, which is also on the agenda tonight, to get that taken care of after it's been paved. So I just wanted to give a quick update on that and let folks know that we're moving through as quickly as we can. It is some wet weather and temperature dependent. I don't think we'll be getting down into the low 50s anytime soon. We've, I think, gotten to the worst of that. But we do have still some things that could impede the paving, including rain. So it might be a little while before we get that wrapped up, but everybody's working to make sure it happens as soon as possible, so.
Great. Excellent, thank you very much. We now take a look at the Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Departments reports. We had three sets of minutes from the rec department, and it was nice to catch up on the things that they are doing. Any questions about those minutes? Wonderful. We now move to public communication. We have 10 minutes set aside for this. If any members of the public would like to address the... Sorry, I got distracted. Any members of the public would like to address the Select Board? Now is your opportunity. We open that up also to folks on Zoom. If you would like to ask a question, you can certainly do that in the chat. You can unmute. Or if anyone here in person would like to go to the podium, you may do so. Excellent. You know the routine, Mr. Eno?
No, I'm not so sure.
Oh, okay.
That's what it was when I left. Thank you, Steve, for doing my heavy lifting for me. I appreciate it. You nailed it. I think we would call this the silly season if so much wasn't at stake in another couple of weeks when the election rolls around. But I want to personally voice my support for you as Board members. I believe you are transparent. I believe you are civil. I believe you are inclusive. I don't believe I have ever experienced a time when you have shut people off, you have listened to their ideas, and responded respectfully when a response is required. I want you to know that personally, you have my support and my thanks for your ongoing dedication to the town. And although I cannot presume to speak for a majority of the residents in this town, I believe intuitively that there is a groundswell of public support for you people who are extremely distressed with the scurrilous nonsense that we seem to be exposed to during the election season on a fairly regular basis. As I think I have said in the past, it demeans all of us, and I pray that it will stop. But in the meantime, you should know that at least from one individual, you have my unequivocal support, and thanks for doing what you're doing. I believe you are doing a good job.
Thank you, Ralph. Anyone else? All right, last call on Zoom? Okay. Excellent. All right, very well. We now move on to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. We're going to take item 23131, which is to consider the appointment of Sean Roderick to the Connectivity Committee. If you would like to go to the podium, introduce yourself, and we'll take a look in your packet at your application, which is on page 15 of the packet. Sean, welcome.
Yes, Sean Roderick. I live on Forzarella Lane here in town. Been on the school board now. I just realized today because my son's going to sixth grade. My daughter's going to be in eighth grade for nine years now. And I talked to Eric back before, not to rehash history, about different ideas I had when it comes to this, you know, the connectivity in town. And I think now, since we've talked, there's even more of our state tax dollars that are being put towards this. I think there was millions of dollars in the last budget, and I think there's things that can be done to help residents of this town within existing resources through the state. And I would love to bring that to the town and help towns folks. I've already helped a few folks who had heard from Spectrum it was going to be like $5,000 to hook up to the internet. I connected them with a program, and they paid under $500. So there's a lot of programs available that we don't... I believe we don't need to use more tax dollars for them.
Excellent, good. It's your resume and having someone that's in Augusta is always nice.
Actually, I have a call on Wednesday for my day job with the Connectivity Authority.
Great. That's excellent, Sean. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Carol.
Yep. Can you just tell us a little secret that you just alluded to?
Well, the Connectivity Authority has dollars available. If you talk... Actually, if you talk to your provider, whether it's Spectrum, the DM... I don't know all the providers here in town. I think you're in Spectrum. And you tell them you want, they will actually work with Main Connectivity Authority and your provider to lower the rate. And that's coming about in probably the last six months to a year. And so people in town are looking, Main Connectivity Authority, they're there to help, and they've added a lot of new positions, and they're happy to help, so.
Thanks for sharing that.
Right.
And there's information, too, with our franchise agreement. The Spectrum was beholden to our franchise agreement to have essentially now already covered the rest of town. And if we can actually have that enforced when we do a renewal, people who have paid anything to have internet brought... to have cable brought to their house will likely see that money come back to them because Spectrum was bound to provide it as part of the agreement.
But there's tons of money, millions of dollars available. I don't know the agreement in and out, but there's millions of dollars to help main residents who are not connected or connected at an accessible speed, right?
Eric?
So I'm really excited to have Sean on this committee. He brings a lot of experience with it.
We haven't said yes yet.
Well, yeah, he's said yes yet. But I'm excited to have him have the opportunity to be on this committee because, you know, as Steve was saying earlier, being able to disagree agreeably is a skill. And Sean, we've had some discussions. We don't always agree, but you're always incredibly respectful and thoughtful. And that's just a wonderful thing to have on the town committee. So thank you for that.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Sean Roderick to the Connectivity Committee effective tonight for a term ending on 6/30/2025.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Sean Roderick to the Connectivity Committee, ending 6/30/2025. Is there any further discussion?
I would only just like to say that if he's been on the school board for nine years, you've proven you can handle the heat.
So true, so true. Nine years. All in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you, Sean.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent.
Do we have the paper, Eric?
Yes, I'll pass that on.
All right. We now move to item 23132, which is to consider the appointment of Jennifer Worthing to the Recreation Board. If you would like to go to the podium and introduce yourself, we'll do this all for you.
Hi, my name's Jen Worthing. I live on the Stanley Road in Reed Field. I have been a Reed Field resident almost my whole life. I moved to Virginia for five years, but we've been back in Maine about six years now, and I really love it. I have four kids, all at the elementary school. My oldest is in fourth grade, and my youngest is in kindergarten. So I know a lot of kids. I know a lot of coaches. We're part of a lot of sports. We have a mini van that we bus a lot of children to all the sports, too, that are not even mine. But, yeah, we have a great time.
Yeah, that's great.
Really appreciate you stepping forward to work in this capacity. I know that people love working on the rec board. It's a very good group of people, and everyone who comes along is like excited. So that speaks volumes, and thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Absolutely. It is an exciting time to be a part. Jen? Oh, excuse me, Sean? Can talk to Jen. Sean can talk to Jen. I'm sorry.
I was just going to make a motion.
You can do that, Sean.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Jen Worthing to the Recreation Committee for a period from today through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All right.
We all second.
Second all around. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jennifer Worthing to the Recreation Committee for a period ending in 2025. Any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it, Jen. Very good.
May I make a request to take an item out of order?
Please. Yes, if it would please the Board.
The library folks are here, and I think there is a short presentation, and I think it would be appropriate to take them out of order.
Outstanding. So this is item... For those of you following along at home, item 23134 under New Business. This is Consider a Grant Application for the Reed Field Library Building Improvements. We have five minutes set aside for this,[1478.54] We have five minutes set aside for this, and we welcome our friends here. If you'd like to introduce yourself and give a little background on what you are asking.
Sure. Actually, we have two items. I'm Melissa Small. I'm the librarian at the Reedfield Community Library.
And I'm Pam Mitchell. I'm the chair of the library board.
So the first item actually is about a micro grant. So I was recently contacted by the UMaine Office on Aging and AARP fellow Mary Beth Paquette, who was offering the opportunity for our library to participate in a joint project between UMaine and UNE, University of New England, to increase dementia awareness and inclusivity. And they were inviting a few other local libraries, Cumston Library, or the Monmouth Library in Cumston Hall, and the Library in Green, to be part of this project to make our library more accessible for people living with dementia and/or to provide ways to educate our patrons about dementia. And some examples are to maybe design signage that's more dementia-friendly, set up a display and kiosk with information about dementia, and potentially have a guest speaker to come talk about dementia. So there are a variety of ideas. I've approached the Age Friendly Committee to talk to them a little bit about this, and they're interested in giving us some possible ideas as well. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask permission to apply for, it's a micro grant, for up to $500 for this particular dementia-related project. So that is, that's that part of the presentation.
And that one is not in our packet, is that correct?
That is not in the packet, yes. Yeah, correct.
Do we need to act on that separately, Eric, from the other request?
I think it would be appropriate to just do a separate motion, and you can put it down under Other Business.
Yep, excellent. So do you want to do that?
I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to allow the library to apply for the aforementioned grant.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the library's request to apply for the micro grant for aging, accessibility with dementia. Is there any further discussion?
So this is just to apply for the grant?
Yes, and I just found out about it last week, and it's due on June 15th, which is why I'm here today. So it's just a short grant application, and then they would approve it, and then we would receive it. Assuming they approve it, the project runs just through, I think, early September. So it's all just basically in the summer months to do either a display, have a speaker come in, that kind of thing.
Okay, so it sounds like a very simple grant, so we're not hiring a grant writer or any-
Oh, no, no, no. I would just apply for it. It would, yeah, it would probably take less than a half an hour of my time to do.
Thank you.
And there's no matching side to this?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect.
Excellent. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Very well, thank you very much. I believe you have a second item.
Yes, so Eric, did you want to start on that, and then I can chime in?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine. And so the library is working on a grant and has submitted a grant that is related to the renovation work at the library that we've been working on for a few years now. We'd allocated $50,000 of bond proceeds from the last multi-purpose municipal bond. We have some additional funds available, but if we don't have to spend all that money, or if we can spend all that money and get a better product, that's, I think, a good thing for our community as we look to supplement expenditures that we already have planned with grant funding that has become available. So this was one where we had a timing issue as well. And so I, I'll say, I gave approval for the, for the application. Again, because it was non, it did not commit the town to any matching funds or staff time or work that we weren't already planning on doing. And so the grant that has been applied for the $25,000 is to help with accessibility at the library and making it more of a location for remote work and remote working. And so a couple of aspects come in. One is just the overall usability of the building, but also the access. And so the grant application was crafted in such a way that it really would help reduce the burden of the project that we already have in play with the proposed repair and replacement of the front access ramp and with the installation of an egress on the second floor and emergency exit and all of that associated work, lighting and electrical and all that, down to the, down to the first floor and outside the building. So that's one piece of this. The other piece is that we did perform or put out an RFP for the renovation work at the library a few months ago, so probably early spring. And we received zero bids. A few months later, we had someone approach us and say, "Well, we're interested in doing this. We think we could probably work within your budget, but here's a proposal." And so another agenda item that's related to this is the prospect of having the town engage with a contractor to effectively negotiate for the work to be completed that was proposed in that original project scope that we had received the grant funds for. And there are some other funding pieces that we'll have to talk about when we get to that. But I just wanted to talk about the overall scope, why we're approaching this this way, what the grant component looked like relative to the project. And the overall project cost is looking to be 70,000 to 80,000, depending on how you look at it. And the library has been very, very engaged and very supportive and very patient as we waited for a few years now to try to get this work completed. So I just want to thank them for being so thoughtful. The anticipated process that we're approaching here is that we've secured the majority of the funding. We're waiting and hoping that we get the grant funding to maybe offset some of those costs that we have coming up. I'm hoping the Select Board would be able to consider approving the town and me and the library board essentially to negotiate with the contractor to get that work underway. If that happens, the library board will be considering a similar point of discussion at their meeting on the 7th. And then assuming that we have a positive vote at the June town meeting warrant, we would have an additional $5,000 to put in. And then when the grant awards come back, we will have potentially up to $25,000 to contribute. So the overall financial picture is a bit stepped. But I guess what I would just finish with saying is that we've been working on this for a few years now. It's important work. The library's been a great partner, and we did our best to try to do a multi-part bid, and we didn't get any results, so that we have a sole bid. But I think that we can proceed with that, given the quality of the contractor and the fact that we would still be negotiating scope. And if things don't look right, we wouldn't proceed. And so that's my piece. Pam and Melissa?
Melissa, is that about right?
Yeah, and the only thing that I would add is that this particular grant, which is in the amount of $24,999, is what we applied for. And again, it was due on the 31st. There's, we initially were going to apply for a larger project grant and then decided not to do that. And then my month got busy, and I wasn't sure if we were going to be able to apply for the smaller project grant. And we ended up, with Eric's permission, putting it in. I can certainly rescind the application if needed. But the grant has been made to, or the grant has been applied through the Maine State Library. It is money that is coming, it's a collaborative project with the department, the Maine State Department of Economic and Community Development. And the point is to give money to Maine libraries to expand their capacity to provide targeted resources, services, and physical space to support remote and hybrid workers across the state. And so the budget numbers that you have in front of you are kind of a two-part. So the way I structured it was some of the budget was to put towards building work, which is largely for that accessible entrance ramp that needs to be done. And then the remainder of the budget is actually for electrical work that some of it was, we were thinking about doing for upstairs, the upstairs renovations anyhow. But other parts of that have been added in with regards to the remote work piece of this grant. So the intent of the grant is to make libraries a place that people want to come to work. And that can be home-based workers, it can be remote workers. And so the way, and you'll see in the papers that, they all have this, right? Eric, they all have the grant papers?
Yes.
Okay. So as you look through the application, the intent is to make the library a place that people, including remote and home-based workers, but also others, students or college students, regular people, for whatever reason, to come to work. So right now, if you go into the library, you know there's not really any quiet workspace in the library. We're on one floor, and it's busy. So anyhow, the intent of the electrical is to enhance the upstairs work and then also to work on some electrical outdoors because we have a lot of people who use the outdoor space, a lot of people who are summer residents and others, to do work at the library. We have a 24/7 Wi-Fi, and so that is something that we would like to enhance for summer workers, remote workers, and other people as well.
Melissa, I'm just relaying a question, a couple of questions from the Zoom chat. So the first one is, just want to confirm that the only expectations on the micro grant, should they be awarded, were the only things that you mentioned? That the $500 grant for the dementia exploration and that, that is only for that, right? That $500 is not going to go anywhere else?
The $500 micro grant, which is separate from what I've just been talking about?
Absolutely, yes, we're going back.
That would just be related to dementia-friendly, yes.
Absolutely.
And I'm working with the age-friendly to kind of figure out what that might be like.
No worries. I just want to make sure we address that. The other, the other is a comment. It says, "There are very, 'remote work accessibility at the library?'" "There are very few parking spots, as is, but the idea is to provide Wi-Fi for remote working?" "With the comprehensive plan under 300 residents' remote work, I didn't see in a plan or survey connect info say any of these remote working citizens have connectivity concerns. Were there any deeper connections of the two?" I would ask, I guess, for that question, this is about expanding the options at the library, not necessarily fulfilling a gaping need, so to speak. Yes?
So it's to make the library, libraries in general, but our library, a place that, and it can look like different libraries are applying for this grant, and it can look different ways in different places. So for the way I presented our grant, in terms of the electrical pieces of it, was to enhance the outdoors because we have summer residents who are remote workers or working away from home, and they may, for example, stay longer in the area, which is good for Maine, right? Good for our town, if they're longer here because they have the ability to work remotely. And if you drive by the parking lot any summer day, you'll see people out at the lawn furniture and picnic table, working away. And so this is something to enhance that. We already have 24/7 Wi-Fi to the library and the surrounding area. That was enhanced in a project about two years ago. We have excellent Wi-Fi. And so, and people use that a lot. And so this is to just sort of open it up to, for either people who are remote workers now, who need a space, for example, for a Zoom call. They don't have, we heard from local people that it's hard for them, sometimes in their own home, to have a conference call. So to be able to do that kind of thing, if they need a space, to have that available for people. And did I answer all the parts of the question?
I think you did. And Sean, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I want to think about, the way I'm thinking about this, too, is there are a lot of people that are providing a service to the people of Maine, residents of Reedfield, that have a remote hybrid part of their job. But there are people who really don't want to do that, right? There are people that, "I do not want to see my doctor on a screen. I don't want to see my worker. I don't want to see the support, and I see them in person." Well, the people that are providing that service, they're still have to see other people that way. And there are people in our community that may benefit from more service if, Pam, I'm using your name. If Pam is the worker helping Jen out, but she has to talk to Sean virtually, who really lives in Belgrade, she might still be able to schedule that because she can hop into the Reedfield Library now and do a quick Zoom. So our constituents may benefit from still being able to get that service in person because somebody can stop by quickly and utilize the services within our town. I think it's really cool, and I just wanted to make sure we added that corner component to it.
Go ahead, Cam.
I just want to clarify for people who wouldn't have read the packet, but all the electrical work is for electricity needs.
Right.
For like charging, not for Wi-Fi. The Wi-Fi is already there.
Right, that's correct.
And that's a connectivity issue. People can come 24/7, sit in their cars. I know they do it at the Fayette Library as well as up here.
Yes, they can currently do that. That's correct. So this is-
But then they can't charge their laptop, or, you know, if it's going low when they get started. So this would allow for that. And I appreciate you doing this ahead of us paving the parking lot because you noted that that makes sense. Things are done in a proper order. So just for folks that are listening, $11,750 is for the electrical work, inside and outside in total. And then the remainder of the just under $25,000, $13,249, is to help with the building renovations. And so I think this is a fantastic thing. Thank you for putting it together. I know there are some grants that are easier to put together than others, and the library always does a great job doing this with all of your talented folks, and we appreciate that. And I would like to make a motion that we approve this grant proposal as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the grant proposal as it is written. Is there any other discussion? Go ahead, Carol.
So my memory does not serve me about, I'm thinking the last vote the library had, how much? Was it $15,000? Does anybody remember last year in capital improvements? The lump sum for the library, that was for the upstairs?
So there was $15,000 put into the general reserve, but I think that the intent of that was for-
$50,000?
Fifteen, 1-5, 1-5, sorry. 1-5, with the intent that that be used for the paving of the parking lot. So that capital that was put in there was for a designated purpose. So that $15,000 is there. We had reduced that this year, so this year's warrant includes just a $5,000 allocation for ongoing building repairs and maintenance. And so that's where things stand.
So that's exactly why I think it's imperative that capital improvements, everything is individual, and there's an explanation what that is. I think most people thought that $15,000 for the library last year was renovating the upstairs, which I think most people were like all in on that. If there are some people that need a desk and need a computer, they don't have it at home, and they need, you know, a senior member that doesn't have a laptop or whatever. So by lumping just a dollar amount, saying for the library, not understanding what it's going towards, is just not transparent in my viewpoint. So now we have $15,000 last year, which was for paving, which I think people are still like, hmm, I don't know if that's the best use of $15,000 in town. $5,000 this year in capital improvement, so that's $20,000. But it says this project has a total of $74,000, so it's just, just getting huge. And I don't, I don't understand. So I understand renovating the upstairs. I understand the desks with connectivity. I'm happy to hear we have good Wi-Fi. I can understand the 60-amp box outside the building to accommodate items, two items. I don't understand installing wiring and an electrical box that go under the parking lot for connectivity. If somebody knows that they have something they want to do at the library, they need to come with like a charged computer. They need to come with a charged phone from home. I don't think it's, we do a high cost to run additional electricity. When we say, "Okay, you can be in our parking lot and use the Wi-Fi," that's great. But I don't think it's the town's obligation to have a docking station or charging station for everybody. You do have some, like connectivity for two, to charge close to the building. I don't understand how much of this $11,000 is to run additional electricity across the parking lot to the other side of the parking lot?
So can I clarify something? So two things. One is, I think that there was the 50, 5-0,000 that was voted in, was it two years ago? And that was for upstairs. So when we say upstairs, that includes the fire escape.
That's the egress.
Which is, we only have one egress right now. So in order for it to be able to be used by anybody in the public, it would have to have a second egress. So that, and that's a huge portion of the $70,000. So with the grant, so I guess it, so they're related, but they, so the electrical work and the building work in the grant, basically, if we don't get the grant, which we would know by the end of June, then the electrical work, such as what you're just talking about, the-
The conduit.
The conduit across the parking lot for a charging station out by the picnic table in the library park area, that just wouldn't happen. We just wouldn't, so that's all related to the remote work in libraries piece, which is something that we wanted to do and wanted to try to do. But if we can't do it, if we don't get these funds, that wouldn't happen. So unless we found some other funding for it to happen. I mean, the whole point of it was to try to think about what we could do with, if we were to receive this money, what things would enhance our library space for remote workers, for home-based workers in town, and also for other people. It's not like somebody would say, "Oh, you're not a remote worker, so you can't use that charging station," right? It would be for anybody, but the intent of it. And so, so that also, so if you've been in the library, you'll know that the adult room, for example, which is the only semi-private area to work on the bottom floor, has no electrical outlets at all. So one of these, so nobody can plug in, period, in that room. We've had to run extension cords through the whole building to make that, you know, when someone ran out of charge, to be able to use it there. So these items under the electrical portion of the grant, just, they just wouldn't happen if we don't get the grant. So those are to enhance the library in many ways for the remote work piece of it. But if we can't, there are still some things I would love to have happen. For example, outdoors, we have no outlets on the backside of the building. We have a lot of events. We have no place to plug in a glue gun or a speaker or things like that outdoors, and we have to, again, go through the door from the inside to the outside. So these things that are written into the electrical piece would benefit us for a lot of other projects as well. But in this grant, they're written towards the remote work piece of it. So if we don't get the grant, then they just wouldn't happen now. You know, they might happen down the road. One of them might happen, another might happen. If we have funds and other ways, maybe we'll find money to put an outlet on the backside of the building so we can plug in speakers and glue guns. But the whole project wouldn't happen, for example.
So I get that, and I agree, the back of the building should definitely have some electrical. And I'm pretty sure Dave Morrow can bang out some outlets in that room, like give him an hour, at a pretty low cost. But when you think about running conduit under a parking lot to the other side in Maine, that's just a huge expense for something, I don't, if it's going to be used enough just to charge stuff. To use Wi-Fi, okay. It just seems, I mean, grants are still tax money. This is now blooming into a $70,000, $74,000 expense.
Well, that, so the electrical part isn't part of that $70,000.
Yeah.
I guess that's...
That's, yeah.
That's totally separate.
That was from the man who gave us the bid. That's what he came back with.
He's coming up with this conduit, going...
No, 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 no. The electrical has nothing to do with...
Okay, I'm just saying, I don't think it's the town's responsibility to charge everything for, I don't, it's just like, we identify a simple little thing that somebody lacks and the town has to provide it. I'm just saying, be cautious because, so we had $50,000 two years ago for the upstairs project and the egress?
So we had estimated 50,000 and accrued or raised that through a portion of a general purpose bond that was described that way, as this is for the library, this is for the fire station. If you recall, we actually just reallocated 200 of that thousand towards, that was originally from the sprinkler system, towards the fire truck if voters approved that. So we're having a similar situation here where costs are going up, the money's sitting there, it's essentially losing value. And so this project that was voter approved is kind of in the lurch. And while we'd like everything to come in at $50,000, it hasn't, it doesn't. And so the scope has come in higher than that. The board can decide whether or not you'd like to proceed with that following the RFP process and the bid. And part of this is a negotiation to talk about price and scope, but I guess that is separate than the electrical piece that, so the way this, if I had to split it up, would show that 11,000 of what they're asking for would go towards that electrical stuff. If they don't get the grant, it doesn't happen. And then 13, if they don't get the grant, it doesn't happen, would go towards offsetting some of the costs that are above that original $50,000 estimate that we had.
For the egress.
For the egress and the front access entrance.
And the escaping from the town.
The egress. Egress is separate.
The egress is the escape from the second floor.
The full scope of that original project that we had put out the RFP for. And so they are separate.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, I know they're grants, but it looks...
Well, they already took it out of our pocket, right?
So I have several comments. All grants are not tax funded. Many grants are funded by private charitable organizations and they have nothing to do with tax funds and I believe some of this is coming from there. And just a point of order, we sitting on the select board are obligated to follow the votes that are given at town meeting and the voters approved paving the library parking lot. And so it is not up to us to question what the voters approved. And so we should not sit here and say, well, I don't think people really wanted to approve that because the vote was given. So whether, this is my turn. So whether I agree with that vote or I don't, that's not my job. My job is to do what the will of the voters said and that's what we do here on this board. And it was transparent. It said library paving and that's on the record.
I...
So we're completely transparent.
Don't know that it said paving, did it?
It did.
It did, Carol.
It did.
Yeah.
And so, you know, many times people won't agree with things because it's not the way we wanted it, but that's not how we work in a democracy. We vote and then we live with the result of the vote, whether it's what we particularly wanted or not. But for the townspeople, they don't have to really do anything about it. But for we who were elected, we have to do what we were instructed to do and to not put people down for having their vote count. Anyway, I'd like to call for a vote on this. I think we've had enough discussion, we're way over time.
Very well. We are done with discussion. Is there any further? Very well. All in favor to approve this grant? Very good. All opposed? Good. Carol Doran-Boss opposes the grant. Just making sure that's noted in the minutes. Thank you very much.
Say thank you for listening and we'll let you know what happens with that.
You got it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Dennis, you didn't mention that our lovely new members of course could leave.
Yes, I was going to say, Sean and Jen, you do not have to stay here if you want it. I know, as exciting as it can be, I just wanted to let you know that. But we also, we are going to get back onto the track here, I believe, to get our agenda back in order. And that means that we move now to old business, which is item 23115, which is to consider a new liquor license application for the Reedfield Emporium. We have 15 minutes set aside for this and go ahead.
Just, I think we, I think we got discussing a few things at once, but the first item was just for the grant. We actually still would want to discuss at some point the expenditure of the funds for the project and the authorization.
That's in our packet, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would have been under new business.
All right.
So we'll go back to that, is that all right?
You want to do that instead?
Up to you guys.
Okay. Well, it does seem like it's a lot of library-based things.
Yeah.
Is that okay with the board?
Finish it off.
Yeah. So what we're talking about now, if you can follow along, is the item, I believe...
23135.
23135, excellent. 23135 says to consider a proposal for planned capital improvement work at the Reedfield Library. We have 10 minutes set aside for this and I believe that your packet reflects this in step, excuse me, page 62. Page 62.
So I'll just, I gave a lot of background on this. The grant is related but not controlling. And so we had performed an RFP for this, posted it, reached out to contractors locally, directly. Some said they couldn't do it, some said it would be 18 to 24 months and they couldn't really even give us an estimate because they were so far out. So we basically did not get any results initially. And then a few weeks ago, Maine Highlands Contracting reached out and said, hey, we're going to be doing something in the Belgrade area in between projects. This could be a nice fit for us. We have a lot of experience in this area. I've included their resume essentially that it shows municipal and public library work. And so they gave us a proposal for an amount of 73,975 to do the work as specified for the access ramp and the second floor egress and steps. And so, don't need to add too much else to this other than to say that what I'm looking for would be authorization to begin negotiations with this contractor. You know, no guarantee that we're going to get someplace where we can agree, but begin negotiations and for an amount up to, I'll just say up to $75,000, depending on availability of other funding sources, including capital funds, the grant that might come through, the $50,000 that was allocated, as well as funds remaining in our building reserve that totaled, I believe, 18,000 that had been left over from other projects that we use for municipal building improvements. So that's my summary of this and I did invite Mr. Starbird to attend. He originally was planning on, but had a conflict this afternoon, so isn't able to be here, but I'm sure we can pass along any questions to him if necessary.
So Eric, I just want to be clear. So what you're asking us to do is to approve your ability to negotiate with them and if you would come back to us for approval of any final amount once that was done?
Well, I guess I'm looking for approval up to, up to the 75,000. And that way, we don't have to come back with a final, and we could come back in a few weeks, I guess, so that's a possibility, if you'd like to do it that way. We could come back with a final proposal for the 20th. We wouldn't necessarily know the dollar values of the grant at that point, but we would know whether town meeting had approved the 5,000 and we would potentially have a better, a better scope and better cost estimate. But what I'm trying to do here is make a good faith negotiation without having a contractor feel that we're just trying to string them along and then say, well, thanks, but no thanks. So, yeah.
Go ahead, Ken.
I had a conversation with Eric about this after the packet came out and my understanding, Eric, is that this isn't necessarily going to include a stair case like with steps on the outside of the building, but it may only just include, say, a ladder, that it would be viewed by this contractor as more of a escape route rather than a comfortable walking down route.
Yeah, so that's one of the things we will be discussing and negotiating price on.
And so in full disclosure, I think there are some contractors in the greater Franklin, Andrusgog and Kennebec County area that we could approach who do metalwork to see if they would give us a bid just on the metalwork, to have someone else install it, because that's what they do. They build trailers and fences and all sorts of things, staircases and so on. And I think we should explore that and I'm willing to do that, but I think if what this company is looking to do is to put a fire escape ladder attached to the building, on the building, that's not something I'm in favor of. It's not something we've ever talked about. I don't know how the library folks would feel about that and I think everybody should have that discussion before we actually sign a contract, because I don't think I want to get the egress up there just so that we can have a ladder, because I can't see a whole lot of Reedfield people climbing down the ladder in an emergency. It's just, maybe out of a college dorm, it might be a little bit easier to envision, but, so I would, I kind of like what Steve suggested. You know, let's, if we give you the permission to negotiate this, let's see if we can get some other information together with it before our next meeting and then come back with a proposal so that we at least know, is it, I mean, it's just a lot of money and things have gone up in price and they're not going to go down, so we're not going to get this done if we don't do it. And so, and I'm still a firm believer that we need to finish this project. We need to get all those rooms upstairs done. They need to be correctly done without plaster falling down. We need to be able to use the space, because that's what we said we'd do when we committed to the library project and I want us to finish it. So I'm done. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can, can we have, okay, this is the most important thing we need out of this bid and this is the second most important thing and this is the third important thing. And if the funding comes through, this is like the really, the wish list, where finishing that room, I hope is first on everybody's mind, because that would be used year round.
That's not on this at all.
Excuse me?
That's not on this at all.
The upstairs room is not what this contractor is doing?
No.
I'm confused.
No, I think it is. I think it is. I think it's to do the work upstairs, but it wasn't all of the room work. Like, I think it was still listed in here that there would be volunteers who would help with, like, getting the plaster down and painting and doing that sort of stuff.
This does not include the whole upstairs?
No, this does not include the whole upstairs.
My God, that's the one thing we need and we keep...
Well, I guess what I'll say is we can't do that work and use it unless we have an egress. People need to get in the building and...
And it's just getting people out in the case of a fire.
Yes, but we have to have that to do the work upstairs.
Three people have to go down the ladder in the once in a lifetime thing, because we can't afford to do the upstairs. It's a trade-off. Do we want the upstairs? Do we want a nice walk down escape route?
Well, I think that's what Eric is asking for, is for him to negotiate with this contractor to make that hierarchical list that you're talking about of this is what we need and what things are you including in this price and what will they look like? So don't just say it's an egress. Is it a ladder? Is it a rope? Is it a staircase? You know, what is it? Because you have to be really careful, otherwise you don't get what you're, you think you're buying.
So who's involved in these negotiations with this contractor? Just you or the library?
The library board would be...
Age friendly? Is there a bunch of committees that...
The library board would be, and I'm hoping that it's a fair question about priorities and that's one of the questions I asked the library board and that's one reason why we talked about the fact that they're having a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, to talk about this project and what their priorities are. So they would be involved with this. And yeah, it's just a hard thing. We did an RFP that was based on a lump sum. It's a hard thing for contractors to just give you all of their information without some kind of a commitment that you're willing to negotiate and work with them, right? So, because it could be that we're just going and getting the information and then saying, well, yeah, now that we have all this information, we're going to go do this ourselves and job it out and part it out. And so it's a matter of, well, legal importance to try to make sure that we have at least an understanding that we're negotiating in good faith.
And just if we, now, just for my clarification sake, if we authorize this tonight, there's still negotiations that have to go through. It's not like anything is set in, right?
Absolutely, no, yeah, no, no.
Okay. So just to make sure, if we give this authorization, it's just so we can find out, just so we can ballpark it and then come back with more information.
And a hierarchical list of priorities.
That's lovely.
In part based on, I think, some of the cost, because it's hard to put priorities on things if you, if you don't know what they cost.
You know, I mean, we've been involved personally with contractors for 27 years and we go, this is what we want done. And you stand in the room and you go, okay, this has to be demolized, this has to be installed and they give you a bid. So you're saying contractors can't come up with the full cost of just that second floor room?
No, I'm saying that we, we did an RFP process. We had nobody results. The RFP was for a lump sum for a specific scope. There have been questions about what we actually want or need or expect to get out of this and so what we're looking to do is clarify with that contractor what we want based in part on what we have available for, for resources and what the needs are.
And one of the things we've...
You have a microphone. I had a hard time hearing you on Zoom.
One of the things that we've run into, which I've had to learn over the years, is that contracting for a municipal government is different than contracting for a commercial business or for a residential building. There are very different levels of insurance and licensing that has to happen when you're doing municipal government building work. And because of that, the cost is always higher. And whether we like it or not, that's the way the quote game is played. And so it's much easier for you to stand in your living room and get an estimate from somebody, because they don't have to have all these other things in line. And so the costs are always more and this is the only person who's given us anything. So I think the idea here is to see what we can negotiate with these people to get this project as close as we can to complete it. And can we complete the rest of it with volunteers or with the town maintenance men, workers who are currently just men, to finish off that work, doing painting and so on as they've been doing in here?
Okay.
I would like to suggest we go ahead and move this on to vote also with the provision that we're going to be talking to Eric again at the next board meeting, right?
Yes, please.
And, you know...
Absolutely. Very clear.
Exactly.
Absolutely the right thing to do. So it's been moved to...
So your motion is to authorize Eric to negotiate?
To negotiate.
And to bring back a firm proposal?
Correct.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize Eric to negotiate for the work at the library with the contractor. Is there any further discussion?
And can we have whatever you come up with with him, like exactly what is what dollar amount? I mean, like it is clear and it is itemized?
That's what I'll ask for.
That'd be great.
Fantastic. Anything else? All right. Very well. All in favor? Thank you very much. Now I think that takes care of our library slate. Thank you very much to all of you.
Thanks for going too.
And we do want to go back to item 23115, which is to consider a new liquor license application for the Reedfield Emporium. Eric, I'm going to turn this over to you and then we also have our code enforcement officer here as well. I would defer to you as to how best to proceed.
And for anyone following, we're on page 20 now.
Yes, thank you.
And sorry, for some reason, I thought that those two library things were together and that's why I had brought it up, but...
They were separate articles.
In any event, here we are.
You got it.
So I'll just give a quick introduction. The board had received an application for liquor license at the Emporium. There had not been a planning board application submitted prior to that or any, anything indicating that there would be a change in use. So all that was submitted to the town was this liquor license application. The question of parking came up and so I promptly worked with the code officer and chair of the planning board, as well as reaching out to state officials about some of the parking situation in the area to try to get an answer for you folks, because that's what you were looking for as to what was, what was required, what was needed, what was existing. And so I sent a memo to Paula Clark, who promptly did a review in conjunction with the code officer, who also had an active role in trying to bring some of this information to the applicant. And that was the process that we went through. We moved quickly, deliberately and without bias, I'll just say that, to try to make this happen, because that was the wish of every... this happen, because that was the, the wish of every member of this board at that meeting, that if there was a way to do this, that we would. And so we have taken those steps. And Chip, I'll let you take over.
Make sure you introduce yourself, please. Thank you. You know the deal.
Ronald Frederick Stevens III.
Thank you, Ronald.
Your code officer, LPI LHO E911, and part-time fire department.
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was listening to the last meeting on this, and Eric came in and asked, see if I could make some sense here. But I also want you to know that a lot of people I've spoken to have been saying, let's get this done. It's, it's not rocket science. It was there before. What can we do to get it done now? And in that spirit, what I did was went back and look at the historical, you know, background of all of this, much of which occurred back in the 1980s, 1981, 1989. And the commission then had different ordinances and all, and didn't have a lot of the things that were needed. But they were real smart. They had a, you know, they had an ordinance that a lot of towns were using that outlined how many spaces per use was there. And they did a really good job, because it's very close to what we're doing today. So the two different things I did was, first of all, figure out how we were going to allocate spaces today, much like they were then. They're very similar. And then also get over there and see exactly where spaces were available. I think Bob threw a sheet here, which was pretty much what was, you know, called for back in 1989 and was used until. So I direct you to this sheet right here. It's really sloppy, so you'll know which one it is. That's me. And it basically took Bob's original 1988 plan that was done by a bunch of important people, that it had the different components of a, I think even that it was an eight, an eight-table restaurant, a retail, and the other part was the two apartments. And if you see up in the upper left, right-hand corner, three restaurant seats would equal one parking space, one apartment would equal 1.5. Today, we'll probably make it two. One employee, one space, and then retail. Back then, the store was supposed to be more busy, and so they had 8.5 spaces allocated to that. Today, the dispensary has taken the place of that retail area, and by my figures and everything, about two spaces are needed in the parking area. I purposefully had no parking planned on for, on-street. It's going to happen. That's temporary, or transitory, as the government likes to say, type parking. And there was a problem back in 85. They didn't do that, and they had parking on 42. And that had a lot of problems, and that was rescinded.
You mean 41, right?
So if you look at this chart we have here, there's one, two, three areas of parking. One's directly behind the Emporium itself, of 12 spaces. There are six spaces behind the dispensary. And then there's another five or six spaces on the side of the old real estate building, which altogether comes up to somewhere between 23 and 24 spaces available, with no on-street parking, safe, available parking. Their needs come out to, if you look at the chart there, three employees, two apartments, retail, dispensary, like I said, two, restaurant, let's figure eight. He said six tables. I've got eight or six or 10 tables, four seats to a table, which come up to eight or 13 spaces. So we got somewhere between 16 and 22 needed. They've got 23 to 24 available, not including on-street parking or parking behind the library, whatever happens. So it's, it's very doable. That's number one. They, and I talked to Paula. We were involved very much in her decision, which you saw there. We wanted to keep the planning commission out of all this, because, you know, there is a political edge to this, a town-friendly edge to this and everything, and a lot of people want to see this happen. I then went over and measured out the different areas. I was asked by Paula and others to better understand the parking next to the old real estate building, and very easily will fit, as I said, somewhere between six and seven cars. It's six-foot wide just to the garden, not to the building. And it's, it's 16 feet long, 96 in total. We can't park on the septic, so it's, it's all can be done strategically. So strategically, legally, morally, and ethically, it can fit. Now, here's the, here's the pullback, okay? The one thing that you all asked for was gravelled driveway, which was also asked for back in the 80s and was done. Since then, between the decades and the misuse of it, as you see right now, it's mud and grass, and that's not acceptable. I did meet with Mr. Bittar three or four times. We went over this, and he understood it. He, he was agreeable to all the numbers. He's not pushing out any numbers. It's good on his side. Then, so, again, everybody should be pleased, but there's been no execution. Bob's taken off. He's doing something tonight. He's going to be away for weeks. He says that he has somebody that's supposed to bring in the gravel when he gravels his house over here for his use. So you're going to have the wonderful distinction of being able to figure this out. The good news is, it can be done. It has been done. It fits today, what's needed, what's available. But again, what's needed is gravel over there. You've seen the, the shape of it. It needs railroad ties with markings on it, demarcating the parking, so we don't have somebody going sideways and taking it all up. And that's all been discussed. Those two things have to be done. They really should have been done by tonight. That was my request, and I think it was your request. So whether you decide to go ahead or not, whether you're going to do it as a contingency or not, understand that it all works, but it's going to be the execution and my job to enforce. So I want you to think carefully about that. We've all done our part in making this happen. It's a positive thing. A lot of people love the Emporium. Tourists love it. But it's got to be a two-way street. So I think you all have done your job. I've done mine. It's on you now.
Chip, can I ask you a question?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the, the gravel, right, is clearly necessary for the wintertime and off-season if they're open in the winter, right? Is it parkable now?
No.
Tonight, it's parkable now?
No, it's, if you go over there, and I've gone over there each day, hoping that I'd see gravel there. I think they knocked down some of the grass. But right now, there's a big mud puddle from the, you know, the rains over the last few days.
Okay.
And, you know, if you look at the original drawing, I mean, it was really beautiful. They had it all done with trees, the sitting place. You can see the old sitting place they did back in the 80s. It's, it's just going to take some effort. If this is truly a want and need to get done, if somebody really wants to do it, they've got to get it gravelled. They've got to get it marked out on the rails.
Yeah, okay.
And they got to make it happen.
Just wanted to be sure, I want to be really clear about that.
No, it's not just the winter. It's, it's needed now.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol?
Chip, it seems behind the Emporium, there's a lot of overgrowth. Is there clearing that needs to happen, too?
Absolutely.
It looks kind of quiet.
Absolutely. And it was before. I think when Aaron, the medical marijuana dispensary guy, he had to do that before he got the planning zone, you know, planning, you know, permission and all. And that was done, but there was no gravel put down and no places marked. And it's just grown up since. So, I mean, they got to be careful. He's got the lumber there. He's got the septic fields in the back. He's got the game plan.
And Chip, can I ask you this question? Even, no matter what happens with the board tonight, the State Bureau of Alcohol has to come in and do a site visit as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So, so just again, no matter what happens here, there will be an official from the state that will need to go through the site and take a look at it.
And Bob's pretty good at that stuff. I mean, he had that tavern and, you know, pizza place for quite a long time. He's got relationships. It's getting this part done. It's having the dedication, get that gravel down and get it arranged properly. And then, you know, everybody's done their job here. There's, nobody has not gone the extra mile here. On your board, on the planning board, in my office, it's been done. It's there. Do it. The liquor commission, that's on the state. That's not on you guys.
Yeah.
So I have a rookie select person question for you, then. Is it even possible to give a, I don't want, what you want to call it, a...
Conditional?
Conditional permission that if, I think he said it was the 29th of June he wanted to open, right? Did I get that right?
That was the date on the application.
Right. Okay. So is it acceptable to give conditional approval with some date that's reasonable, that says as long as the parking lot is ready to go by this date?
I guess, I don't really know. I think liquor licenses is probably a little bit different. The trouble with liquor licenses is they have to be approved or denied by a certain date. And if they are not, then the automatic approval happens. And so Bob had submitted this, and the 60 days would be up, I think, the 15th or the 14th of, of June. But as Chip said, you know, he has a responsibility to, to do his part of this. He was told by Chip multiple times that, that he needed to have that gravel, and he actually stood before the board and said, I'm putting the gravel in. I'll put the gravel in. If you want gravel, I'll put the gravel in. And it hasn't happened. And I think it's at least concerning for me that that hasn't. But I guess, I don't know if there's a good answer, other than to say that I don't know how the state would look on a conditional approval when they have a statement that says if it's not approved, in a certain time, it's an automatic approval. So I guess I don't know.
So if we don't approve it by June 15th?
Approve or disapprove?
Approve or disapprove.
Approve or disapprove. Then it's automatic approval?
Yes.
Yes.
Chip?
That's a state law.
In his defense, and as code officer, it's hard to get materials right now. It's hard to get people in. You know, maybe he had a problem getting it in before tonight's meeting.
But didn't you state that he had it delivered over to his house?
No. He, he was trying to get both projects done at the same time. And he's saying that he can't get anybody, he can't get anybody to get to deliver whatever. I don't know. But, you know, again, the liquor and the town are two different things. I don't think the liquor, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a liquor person. But I think that, I think there is, there is a pathway here, if you, if you seek it. And I don't, I don't know. Dennis, you spoke to the liquor authority, right?
Yes, I spoke to a representative at Bablo, and that was basically the same idea, was the, the biggest concern will be the, the door between the cannabis shop and the Emporium.
Which absolutely will be closed off. I made that very clear. That has...
Right. That'll have to be filled in. It can't just be a door. Can't just be, like, locked. It will have to be completely closed.
It should have been when they took their license for the, the dispensary. The medical dispensary people in the state are very lax. But that should have been already done. I have full commitment from him and Aaron that that's going to happen.
Well, Bablo won't actually give the license unless that does happen. That's out of the site visit.
And I made that clear.
So, so again, you know, we can approve it or not approve it, but Bablo is going to have the last say.
Right.
And that's Bureau of Alcohol.
Beverages.
Beverages, lottery, et cetera, et cetera. Sean?
So I want to make a motion. Before I do, I want to explain it. If, if this came to us from anybody else, we would say no. Just like when Aaron came to us with his Crayola drawings of his security cameras for Moon Glow. Do you remember? You were on the board with me. You were, too, Mr. You know. And we said no. We denied it, until he fixed his application to go along with the regulations we were looking for. He may have come up with ideas so far, like Aaron had, but we denied it. So I don't know why we would treat this business any differently. So I'm going to make a motion to deny the liquor license based on the fact that the parking is not in place. If and when it does happen, I would love to see Mr. Bittar stand there with it done and a finished application and the Emporium to reopen.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the liquor license application for the Emporium. We now have an opportunity for more discussion. Go ahead, Cath.
I just want to second what Sean just said, which is exactly what we told Aaron with Moon Glow. If you bring us back the proper documentation, you know, either, in Aaron's case, it was a business plan and some drawings. In Bob's case, it's he's got to have the parking in place. As soon as that comes back, we're good. So submit a new application. We'll do it right then and there. Because, I mean, that's the way we've handled things. And that's how I feel about this. I, I think it's a great thing for the town to have the Emporium reopen. But he's got to have, he's got to meet the requirements, as Sean said, like anyone else. So I just want it on the record that, at least from my perspective, once he has that done and he comes back with a new application, we'll do it right off. He could still meet his 29th opening date, no problem.
Yep.
But we have till the 15th of June?
Because, well, he, his application, I believe, was April 14th. So we have 60 calendar days. I think that was the date I read on it.
Yeah, it's somewhere close to that.
It's there somewhere.
And, and I just want to point out, just, just, this is just to serve liquor and alcohol.
Right.
If all the rest of the licensure is in place with the health inspector and all the, the victualer's license, which is part of what you need, et cetera, et cetera, the, the Emporium could, could feasibly open by the opening date. They could be serving, you know, Cokes and Pepsis, whatever. They're delicious food. And then, once the approval comes in, add alcohol service later. That's correct. Yes?
It's correct. And if he got the gravel in, depending on what you folks think...
I'm sorry, but as code officer...
He could be able to actually resubmit the application for the 20th and get approval then.
Okay. Go ahead, Chip.
As code officer, it doesn't matter if you're drinking, you're eating, you're at the dispensary. That has to be a safe parking lot.
Okay. So the parking lot sort of trumps that?
The parking lot and the demarcation of, you know, sane parking.
Demarcation, yeah.
You know, he's got to have, you know, railroad ties or something there showing where people can park.
Right.
It's got to be safe, or otherwise you're going to have a dangerous situation like they had back in the 80s, which they had a closer, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
I would suggest that that's not a wise idea to say that. I think it's important, no matter what's held on there, that this has to be in, you know, this has to be in place.
It has to be prepared to be a restaurant and accept the public safely.
Restaurant, retail, apartment, they all need safety. They, you know, the way it is right now, it doesn't fit.
Got you. Carol, did you have something?
I do, just in the fact that, so how many spots, if the gravel's not done, are eliminated? Not all of them?
Eighteen.
How many are down?
The only one that's left, the only ones that are legitimately left are the ones that are parked on the side of the real estate building, between that and the firehouse.
And how many is that?
Six or seven.
Or five?
Okay. I think five were on your drawing, but...
My only point is, I don't know how we can't take into consideration on-street parking. Every function, whether it's the library, whether it's the art gallery uses the post office, the library uses, you know, down Main Street to the town hall. The town hall uses on-street parking for things that overflow here. So that's how we operated for many, many years. And that's how most towns with limited parking operate. I don't, I don't know how all these towns say, okay, every single restaurant on this road in Hollowell, you have to have 15 spots that are just yours, slates. And you, by the way, pick another one, liberal cop, you need 15 just for you. I, I...
Carol, they do that. They do do that. In Hollowell, they have parking in the back on the river. They have parking in back of certain places. It has to be accounted for.
Slates doesn't, Slates does not have that. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm telling you that there's only two or three parking spaces that that's going to add to it. And that's right in front of the pot shop.
And all the way down Main Street, which is just people crossing the street. So I'm just saying, that's how we existed for many years, which is my only thing. I, I understand the gravel is imperative, and he should have the parking...
Well, I think a key piece is that Mr. Bittart has agreed with this, according to Chip. And he doesn't have any problem with doing this. It's a, it's a getting it done thing.
But if you can't get the supplies, we're going to say, I'm sorry, you can't, we know how contractors and supplies are. It's been that case for many months. So if that's, like, the thing that's stopping this from going forward, it's not that he's not willing. It's that there's a delay.
There are gravel yards that'll bring you gravel pretty much same week. I've had it done.
Yeah.
This spring.
I, I got to say that I've been doing a lot of work lately up at the farm and, and getting gravel and things loaded. And it's, it's just not an issue right now. It really isn't. I don't, I can't believe he's called. I mean, can you believe, David, he would, if he called, you know, Lenny, or just, I need a load of gravel, you know? How hard is that right now?
Getting a load of gravel and getting somebody to do the work and actually...
Getting a load of gravel and getting somebody to do the work and actually put gravel in place is a different thing, too.
That's true.
I'm not saying one way or the other.
Yeah.
Actually having somebody do the work would be, as opposed to, hey, can you drop me off, Paul, I have gravel, it's pretty.
Right.
Well, I think that, I think the area is pretty defined, because it was there before.
Probably the gravel is there, and you could probably take all the grass on top of it, the leaves, that's turned into a whole, the ground grass on it.
Get some railroad ties. It almost seems like, I was looking at the other day, it feels, feels to me that you could hire a couple of good, strong high school kids and take spray paint on the, on the grass and, or on the gravel that you break out and you could do it, but it's just not that big an area. You know, if you really want it done.
It could be done.
The Weather Vane just did it, actually. The Weather Vane just added a whole bunch of gravel to their back lot, just, just a few weeks ago.
We do have a.
I think going on the fact that Mr. Bittart has agreed with us, that we just hold him to the fact that it needs to be done to meet the requirements, and I think we can build into the motion that we, if, once this condition is met, we will approve a new license application. I'm happy with having that added into Sean's motion. I don't know if Sean is.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's just what I said with fancier words.
Well, you did mention it, and that's when I started babbling, so, did you get that in there?
So there is a.
We are fine.
Yeah.
Sean's motion with fancier words.
We'll admit in the future.
Is what we're looking for. I just second Sean's motion without the fancy words.
So it's been moved and seconded, it is on the floor, and the motion that we are, the motion that we are considering is a denial.
Denying this current.
Application.
Application. And we'll approve a further application if the parking requirements that he has discussed with the code enforcement officer are complete.
Are we open to meeting quickly, so we, there's not like a two-week wait for our next select board meeting?
Well, we'll be meeting on the 20th, which would be ahead of his opening date. And then we'll be meeting, but we don't know yet, but sometime after the 4th. The 4th is a Tuesday? Is the town office closed the day before?
For which day?
The 3rd of July.
It's not closed. Some people might be on vacation, but it's not closed.
So we might be meeting the 3rd or the 10th already. So we're going to be right in the neighborhood of his state.
And I think it's also important that we hold him to something that he has to fulfill.
Excellent. So I would like, Sean, for the sake of the record, I would like for you to reintroduce your motion and get a second, just, just to make sure we have it on record and correct. Thank you.
I would make a motion to disprove, is that even a word?
Deny.
Thank you. Disprove is not a thing.
It is a word, it is a word.
Strike it from the record for right now.
The fancy words, dude.
See, that's why Catherine's going. Make a motion to deny the current application, and we, the select board will reconsider a positive vote on a further application when the parking has been addressed as designed with assistance from Chip. And every time I say this, it's going to sound completely different, but somehow mean the same.
Would you like to go ahead?
We know what you mean.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the liquor license for the Emporium as presented with the contingency that, once the parking situation is revisited, we can reconsider a new application. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Very well, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move to our next item of business, which is to speak about the Heritage Days celebration. I'm going to do that quickly.
Thanks.
And let everyone know that Heritage Days is happening, August 11th and 12th. We have a pretty nice sense of what the events are going to be. Friday night, 5:00 to 7:00 will be the Wine and Cheese at the Historical Society. Then, beginning on Saturday morning, there's going to be a book sale. There will be a history walk from Dale Potter Clark. Kickball is happening again. There's going to be a Makers Market and Community Fair that happens at the beach, along with our band called the Evan Haynes Trio. Evan Haynes Trio, Evan is from Wayne, and so there's a little bit of a connection there. So Evan Haynes Trio is going to be playing, what's that, Steve?
No, he's just a former student of course.
Oh, yeah, of course, they all are, they all are.
Glad Evan's making it good.
And so Evan Haynes Trio will be playing music from 1 to 4. Will have food available as well. And one of the things that we're doing this year is, we had donated food, and the Weather Vane is going to be our food sponsors again this year, and we want to make sure we have everyone who comes down to the beach area fed with some burgers and dogs and some other things like that, so we are thankful for the Weather Vane like that. If you are listening to this or watching this meeting, and you have an organization, a community organization, a board, a town committee, commission, or just something in Reed Field you would like to have be a part of Heritage Days, you can do that. Simply email me at dprice@reedfieldmain.org, and we can talk about different ways that you can be involved in that. We have a lot of folks coming for the Makers Market, already have some folks coming for the organization. So Heritage Days this year, we're going to do more signage, make sure everybody knows what's happening, but it's all happening August 11th and 12th.
Dennis, I think last time you mentioned that we're doing a potluck dinner with Spirit of America. Is that also volunteer recognition?
Oh, that is. It's volunteer recognition, it's Spirit of America Awards, it's a potluck that will happen in this very room, so a true luck of the pot. And then hopefully we will finish that to walk downtown and watch the fireworks.
Awesome.
Indeed. Anybody else have any questions? I love Heritage Days, and I can't wait for it to happen.
Thank you for all your work.
You got it. All right. We now move to new business, and we take a look at item 23133, consider a special event liquor license for Kent's Hill School. We have the, don't know.
Anyone know what page?
But we have the Kent's Hill representative, Ms. Graziano, hello there, who is here to give us a little background and information about that. Oh, hi there. Nunzi, do you want to go ahead and tell us a little bit about what you're looking at?
Sure. We're hosting the KV Chambers Business After Hours on June 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. predicting between 100 and 200 people. And the event will be in our dining commons. The students are all gone, so it's an adult-only event. And it'd be in our dining commons on Kent's Hill's campus, which is bigger, big enough for 200 and more, because we have at least 350 people eating in there every day when school's in session.
Excellent.
I would make a motion to approve the special liquor license application for Kent's Hill School for the KV Chamber Business After Hours event on June 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. as presented in our packet. Did I get it?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the liquor license for Kent's Hill School as presented in the packet. Is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Excellent. Thank you, Nunzi.
Thank you.
You got it. Items 23134, 135, we have taken care of. So we move now to new business, item 23136, which is to consider a donation by the Reed Field Recreation to RSU 38 for a shared scoreboard. This is in your packet on page?
68.
68, thank you very much.
And just so we know, we have 10 minutes before we have to extend the meeting.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
So very quickly, the REC Board is looking to, and it's shared, this is a fantastic collaboration between the school and the town.
Wrong. Is that the right one?
Sorry. And so the school is looking to purchase a $15,000 scoreboard. The Reed Field REC would like to show their appreciation for their use of the facility and the collaboration that exists there by contributing 2,500 from their reserve towards that purchase. They would be also given a scorekeeper, a separate unit that can be theirs to bring with them for events, as kind of part of that. And so it would be shared use.
And I just want to explain what you're talking about.
Yeah, sure.
So the scoreboard technology operates on a wireless base set. And so the idea is, if you want to use that scoreboard, you turn on the wireless base set and it then talks to the scoreboard. What Eric was explaining is, the REC department would get their own remote base set that is outside of what the schools would have, so that way they wouldn't have to rely on having one set passed back and forth, they would have their own.
And the current one is not wireless.
Current one is not wireless, so even better, so it's an upgrade.
Current one is not wireless.
Absolutely. Thank you. I just want to point that out, because it may be a little bit confusing for folks.
That's perfect, I didn't know the words to use, so I just said the clicky box.
The clicky box, then, yes, that'll work.
But things I'm more familiar with is the resources available. The Recreation Board does have between 18,000 and 20,000, depending on how things shape up at the end of this fiscal year, available to put forward for projects like this. So in their recreation reserve, they have a minimum of 18,000 and upwards of 20.
Excellent. Very well. I would entertain a motion to accept this donation.
I make a motion for us to accept the donation of $2,500 from the REC budget to the school for the scoreboard.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the REC donation of $2,500 for the shared access to the scoreboard. Is there any further discussion? Very well. All in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you to the REC, and thank you RSU 38 for doing a great job of working together. We now move to item 23137, which is to consider the purchase of a swim float and accessories for the Reed Field Beach.
Can I interrupt for a quick second?
Please do.
As you folks sign this liquor application license, you have to put select board after your name. And do we, are we signing the denial of the liquor license?
There's no signature required for the denial.
Okay, thank you.
Disapproval.
I guess we're under the swim float.
Very well, so the swim float is in your packet, you can see, it is on page 71. The, one of the REC committee members, Greg Lineback, has been working with Ham and Lumber about this, in addition to a ladder and the weights for this. This is something that I had mentioned at the last meeting, that it's time to do this, and we are able to do that. I think what we're looking for tonight is an authorization for up to, just to be safe, up to $3,000 for the float, for the ladder and the weights to do that. That will be more than enough, but I just want to make sure we cover everything in this authorization. You can see on page 70 is the email, page 71 is the float, and there is money that is available for that. Eric, can you tell us a little bit about where those funds are coming from?
Sure, so the beach does have a dedicated reserve for things like capital projects, infrastructure, and swim float certainly fits into that category, being a fairly expensive item and having a long lifespan. So we have, I expect around, let me just scroll down here, and I got to rotate the screen, 13,000.
521.
521 and change, estimated available at the end of this fiscal year.
Excellent. Go ahead.
I couldn't want this more. I just think we, thank you. The beach needs so much attention. You know, we're talking about another area of the town that needs attention, but we've already got a beautiful one that everyone seems to love, and it just needs, needs a little bit more. So I really appreciate people considering this and trying to get it back to.
I just have one question, because I agree with everything you just said.
Okay.
Who's going to install it?
That was, that was my fault.
Go ahead, Sean.
Yes, I think.
Does the $3,000 include the installation of this, or will it be delivered and we got a swimmer peeper ourselves out? Because I did the old one, and it was not fun.
So this new one is, this new one will be much easier, and the idea is that.
Are you sure?
I'm positive of it. And so the idea, yes, the idea is that, what I envisioned for this, and I spoke to Greg about it, too. We can have, yeah, I know, right? We can have, we, the goal is for us to install it, but then what we anticipate is, like in the past, is asking in the future maybe for the fire department to assist us with that. But there's no need to pay for the installation. I think we can handle that.
All right, cool.
Thank you. Go ahead, Carol. Actually, can we have a motion first, and then we can open discussion? I just don't want to, I want to make sure we have.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the swim floats, including anchor rope and attachment hardware and the, what are they called?
Ladder? The anchors?
The anchors, not to exceed $3,000.
Sean really wants the second.
Taken from the recreation budget.
And the ladder.
From the, is it the beach or the rec?
The beach.
From the beach.
The recreation, the beach budget.
From the beach budget.
And that would be the capital reserve.
From the beach capital reserve budget. Teresa will be appreciative.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize purchase of the float at all for not to exceed a $3,000 limit. Now we can have discussion. Carol?
Just a small thing, so those two things total, the 1559 and the 500-something totals 2,078, can we max it at 2,500? I'm not sure what would raise it another thousand.
Me either, which is what worries me. I just want to make sure that we, because if we authorize it, something happens.
Delivering.
God forbid, then we have to reauthorize it again. So I just wanted a little buffer, that's all.
So, but we're only going to buy the things that I put in the motion, right?
Exactly right.
So just the rope, the hardware, the float, the ladder, and the.
The anchors.
Anchors.
Yeah. So it will not exceed $3,000? Yes?
I don't know if the anchors are like 100 each, or 125 each, so, because we didn't get a price on that here. Does anyone know?
The, yes, the anchors range anywhere from $60 a piece to $127 a piece, the ones that I have looked at.
Okay.
And so that's why, depending on what we can get.
You know, I want to stay away, just out of curiosity.
I don't know. There's, they're variable, some you can fill up with sand that are like submersible, and then that way when you, you can reuse them, and they're not always full. Others are literally anchors, like you would have on your boat, which are what they call the drag anchors as well. But that's the range.
So for something like this, we can't take like 5-gallon drywall buckets and stick a big eyeball in them?
I've thought about that, too. Like, why can't we just fill it up with concrete, throw it in there, and wait it? But I don't.
Because then you need volunteers to take it out.
Yeah. Yes, and the ones, the ones that seem to be very popular are the removable, like, they're temporary, so you can then like dump it out.
So we probably ought to talk to the people that sell the floats, because they probably know what anchors them correctly.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only cost that is included.
All right, I'll just be quiet.
Yeah. That's why we want to make sure. Very well, it's been moved, it's been seconded, it is on the floor to approve up to 3,000. Any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to, we only have one item left for five minutes, so I'll make a motion.
We have more than one item left.
Yep, we have user fees, road striping.
Yep.
Oh, okay. So I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for 20 minutes.
Ooh.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting. All in favor?
Can always make it less.
Thank you very much. All opposed?
Stain.
All right, yeah. Thanks. Very well, our next item is 23138, which is to consider user fees at the Reedfield Beach. We've set aside 10 minutes for this, and I, I think it's pretty, I can explain this. Eric, I, you can explain it, whatever you'd like.
Well, why don't you go ahead, Dennis?
All right, I'll, I'll give it a shot. So what, in the, this year, part of the beach ordinance, the reason that we approved the ordinance is that we wanted, that it's on the ballot, is because we wanted to have a comprehensive set of governing rules and a document that we can have for the beach that allows us to set up basically a standard of activity there that helps regulate that. What we did not include in that ordinance, so that we can have these very discussions, are a particular user fee known as a launch fee. The launch fee is a fee that is meant to, is to be paid once per household for use of kayak launching at the beach. So what I mean by that is, if a resident who does not store their kayak on the rack would have to, just wants to bring their kayak down in their truck and launch from the beach, currently, part of the subset, or an, an appendancy of that beach ordinance is that a, a household would pay $20, get a launch permit, and then be allowed to launch their kayak from the beach. I would like to suspend that. In fact, I would like to suspend it for a year, just to see if it's a necessary fee. I find, I understand why it was put in there, because it's to offset if people want to launch from the beach, and there's more traffic at the beach, there's more wear and tear at the beach, then I understand that you'd want to have a, a little bit of revenue, as nominal as it may be, to help cover that wear and tear. However, I think that it, right now, we don't know exactly how many people are doing that. We have no idea about what the situation is at the beach. However, we do know that someone did try to put in at the beach and was told about the $20 fee. I, I would like to have a motion to suspend that fee for a year, so that we could have a little bit of information about how much the beach really is being used by people who put their kayak in and don't store it there. And I think that, that it is important for us to not necessarily, you know, create a revenue stream there, but also just offer, again, a level of service. Eric, does that fit about right, what we talked about?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think that the intent, and, and really, these are rules of the beach that the, the select board adopts every year. The ordinance just helps make it all easy.
Right, right.
But, so these rules were basically adopted early on as part of our package for, it happened to be in conjunction with, with, with the ordinance. But, so that's absolutely right, Dennis, and it, it's always a challenge to trade off, you know, what's, what's free to residents, quote unquote, because they'll pay for it through tax dollars, or what people pay for as a fee item. And, and I think that was the, was the rationale for this, was that, that there's an impact, so it's something of an impact fee. But can certainly understand the, the interest in getting more information and not, and perhaps not, not including that as a fee.
Excellent. Sean?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I was sorry for missing this the first time, because it was definitely me who brought it up as the person, like, I was annoyed that somebody got charged $20. And I think that was, I just wanted to apologize to Eric for missing it the first time around, because, you know, I like to think we capture the right things at the right time and don't have to rehash. But I don't think this is a necessary cost. I think it's something that, sure, let's look into and see what we can do. I know the beach is an expense to have, for sure, and it's something that doesn't have an offsetting revenue, so I understand the need to think about ways to do that. This isn't a wave. It's not a launch. It's not a vessel launch, I guess. I just think we need to really.
There's one quarter mile down the road.
Yeah. So I think, I appreciate us bringing this back around, and I'd make a motion to waive this $20 fee for a year.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive the $20 launch fee, which is included in the appendices of the beach regulations. Is there, it's been seconded, is there more discussion? Catherine?
I'd like to make an amendment to say to, so we're going to suspend the fee for a year and to collect data over the course of the summer beach season on how many vessels are launched, approximately.
How many that are not stored at the beach?
Yes.
If you're on the rack, you.
Yes, totally separate.
That's totally separate. Okay. I, I would, I would vote, I would second that amendment. So what we're doing is, we need to vote on the amendment to the motion, which is an imperative, a directive to collect data, how many kayaks we'll be putting in, just in case. And it's been moved and seconded to approve that amendment. All in favor of approving that amendment to the original motion? Excellent, thank you. So now the motion is to suspend for a year the $20 launch fee and collect data as to how many residents transport their kayaks to the beach and launch there. Is there a second to the new motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Just noting, this is canoes and kayaks, that's what it says on.
Canoes and kayaks. Nobody should be putting their fishing boat in at the beach. Just going to say that. Very well.
Over the rocks.
All in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much, and I appreciate that.
We did that in five minutes.
Very well. Item 23139 is to consider a proposal for road striping and marking services. In your packet, if you are following along at home, this is page?
75.
75. It's the diamond page. There we go. Very well. Eric, you want to give the skinny on this one?
Sure. Yeah, we do this every year. Sometimes we need to have it done sooner. I'm, I'm very eager to get the crosswalks striped. It's been a, a while since they've faded away. But we had a competitive bid process, we had four bids come in, and it, it was more competitive than we've seen in the past, actually. Fine lines came in quite close. But Lucas Striping provided the lowest unit cost overall. They had a slightly higher per square foot cost, but the per square foot component of our pavement marking is such a small piece compared to the long lines, but the value really is in the, the.
The longer side.
The longer side. And actually, I guess, I'll back up, I, I misremembered that. They came in lower on the, they were lower on the square foot. But competitive on the, on the actual long lines with, with fine lines. And so they would be a lower cost regardless.
Yes, for sure.
So I'll, I'll take back what I said there. And it's important to note, Lucas Striping is a local Reedfield business, has been doing with us, business with us for several years, has done a fine job, and it's great to have them get this work, because then they can help pay taxes and contribute to the economy.
Love that. I would accept a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve Lucas Striping to, for the, is it all roads?
Just responsive to the RFP.
Responsive to the RFP.
For striping services.
For striping services in the town of Reedfield.